Okay, well, good morning, and I'd like to call to order our Middlesex County Council Meeting for Tuesday, November the ninth. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none, we do need a motion to reorder our agenda as we're going to move our closed session up now. Councillor Warwick and Councillor Elliott, all in favor? And that's carried. So we do have to go into closed session. And I would ask for a mover and a seconder, and I'll read the full motion, that the next portion of the meeting be closed to the public in order to consider labour relations or employee negotiations with respect to land ambulance operations, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on, or to be carried on by or on behalf of council with respect to land ambulance operations pursuant to subsection 239, 2D and K of the Municipal Act 2001. So a mover and a seconder to move into closed session for that reason. Councillor Vanderheiden and Councillor Smith, and that is at 10:56 a.m. All in favor? And that's carried. Okay, so motion to recess until one was Alan seconded by Kelly. All in favor? And that's carried. Good afternoon, everyone, and I would like to resume our Middlesex County Council Meeting for Tuesday, November ninth. For those that are joining us via YouTube, we are resuming as we had an in-camera session earlier this morning, and council met to discuss labour relations and employee negotiations and operations with respect to land ambulance. So we met earlier, so we're resuming our council meeting from then, and we actually do have to return to a closed session, which we will do at the end of this meeting. But the beginning of that session, I did ask for any disclosure of pecuniary interest, and there wasn't any. So today marks the second year in a row that we have not been able to host young students from across the county. Usually, we would have students here representing their communities and elementary schools. This program, we partnered with our local optimist clubs, and it allowed for students to learn about governance and the importance of municipal leadership. We all have connections, and I encourage all of you to reach out to our young leaders in our own personal ways, so that the idea of municipal leadership is passed on. And I would be remiss if I didn't say, thinking about having those students join us in the gallery reminds me of our late colleague Al Edmondson, who always took such joy in taking the kids around the building and teaching them the history of the building. And so we certainly do miss him when we talk about events like this. But let's hope this time next year, our gallery will be filled with young budding leaders of tomorrow. So my colleagues will probably get tired of me bringing this up, but as I've highlighted many times over the last eighteen months, we cannot let COVID and the pandemic overshadow the many other real health issues we may face. As we begin November, I want to highlight the important focus it has now come to represent. November, as we now know, has become the month to focus on men's health, both physical and mental. As a mother of four boys, now men, I am keenly aware of this focus. As I have mentioned many times during these stressful times we find ourselves living in, added attention to our mental health and wellbeing is paramount, especially for men. It seems there is added pressure for men to have it all together and all figured out, and quite often, the struggles with anxiety and depression are battled alone. I implore you to reach out to the men in your life, to check in on them, to ensure they are looking after their mental wellbeing. There are many resources available online through many organizations. Please take the time to do the research and find local resources to support your male loved ones. At the very least, regularly check in with them, so that they know they have a safe and supportive sounding board. Men, of course, must also be aware of their physical health. My father passed not from, but with prostate cancer, and I would encourage men to have frank discussions with their healthcare providers. While there is controversy out there about the testing for prostate cancer, it is evident that prostate cancer can be cured when detected and treated early. When prostate cancer is detected early, tumors are more likely to respond to treatment. You are always your own health advocate. So men, or to the men in your life, pick up the phone and speak to your healthcare provider about your health and your health concerns. We've got the minutes from October 26 in front of us, but just wondering if there was any business arising that council wanted to discuss from those minutes? Seeing none, as I said, we've got the minutes from October 26 in front of us, and unless anything needs to be amended, I would ask for a mover and a seconder to approve those as presented. Councillor Ropp and Councillor Richards. All opposed? And that's carried. We have no deputations today, any inquiries or notices of motion? No reports, so we'll move into new business. And the first one on our list is a report from MLPS, from Kelly Dolbear, the commander of logistics, and it has to do with a vehicle design upgrade. So Kelly, welcome, thank you for joining us, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to council. We've been researching opportunities to revamp the fleet graphics in an effort to promote public awareness and safety. Our last fleet graphic update was ten years ago, when we moved away from the ministry of orange and white design. The proposed upgrade will increase paramedic and public safety by utilizing contrasting high-vis graphics while creating a distinct look that emphasizes Middlesex County. As a result of vehicle delivery delays in 2021, there's a short window of opportunity to include the graphics on vehicles set to arrive in 2022. This equates to approximately one-third of our fleet. A phased-in approach will be taken for the remainder of the fleet during the normal vehicle replacement cycle. A recommendation to council is that the prototype branding design be included in the purchase and outfitting of all future vehicles, and that the rebranding of all vehicles were practical be completed no later than 2027. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, any questions or comments on this report? Okay, seeing none, then you've got the recommendation in front of you, and I would ask for a mover and a seconder, please. Councillor Smith and Councillor Ropp. All opposed? And that's carried. Okay, next on our list is a communications strategy results from an RFP, and I will ask Marcy to take this report on.
Thank you, Warden. So Chris and I are both going to speak to this report, and I'm going to start with a bit of background. This report deals with a request for proposals for the development of a county-wide communication strategy. Over the course of the pandemic, we have seen how important it is to utilize digital communication methods, both internally and with our external stakeholders. We have also seen how important it is to coordinate communication efforts in order to maximize efficiency and ensure consistency across departments and platforms. So to help us do this, we issued requests for proposals ADM 0121 for a qualified and experienced third-party consultant to develop a comprehensive communication strategy to support the county's communications goals and objectives. I'll pass it over to Chris now to speak a little bit more about the requirements of the RFP, the selection process, and financial implications.
Thank you, Marcy. Through you, Warden, to council. The mandatory requirements of this RFP were broken down into three different phases. Phase one, contemplates a review of existing communications policies and procedures, evaluates the institutional knowledge and competencies, and develops a clear communications goals and objectives. Phase two requires a successful proponent to build a comprehensive communication strategy based on the results of phase one. That communication strategy that was built in phase two will provide guidance to staff in a number of areas, including the appropriate platforms to utilize, for example, social media, websites, media releases, print, the scope and the nature of the content to be shared, and the audiences that should be targeted. And phase three requires the development of policies and procedures for staff to implement the strategy developed in phase two. The policies in phase three will also provide guidance to members of county council to help broaden the county's communication reach. The RFP sets a project completion date of March 16, 2022. The RFP was uploaded to the bids and tenders system on September 22, 2021, with a closing date of October 22. Submission reviews occurred the week of October 25 with an evaluation committee. We received a total of five proposals, which were evaluated pursuant to the rated requirements and methodology set out in the RFP. The evaluation criteria included strength of mandatory requirements, experience and qualifications, professionalism of proposal, and the proposed pricing model. From a financial implication standpoint, the successful respondent was Boulevard Strategy Group. They provided a total project price of $39,800. This pricing includes all requirements outlined in the RFP. The development of the communication strategy will require county staff input and time to ensure the project's success. As this initiative is required to adapt and respond directly to COVID-19, staff is recommending that the project be funded from the provincial funding received by the county to address COVID-19-related operating pressures. And I will pass it back over to Marcy.
And so in terms of alignment with our strategic focus, we believe this communication strategy will be beneficial in a number of areas, cultivating community vitality, strengthening the economy, and promoting service delivery. As such, it is our recommendation that council accept the evaluation committee's recommendation toward the RFP, to Boulevard Strategy Group, and approve the attached professional consulting services agreement. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Chris and Marcy, for that. Questions or comments from council on this? Councillor Vanderheiden?
Thank you. I appreciate that we're going to do a communication strategy. I think right now, it's really vital, as we've seen throughout the pandemic. You know, we used to rely on print and papers and newspapers, and now most things are digital, so I really see that in order for all of us as councillors, staff, and the public to stay connected and communicating all the different things that are very positive happening in our communities, that we need to make sure that we're getting this right, because the gaps are really big right now. I can give you an example. We, in our own community, we have newsletters in our tax bills, and you know, then we think people are getting the information, but there's a lot of places that only one person gets a tax bill, and that's a whole, like apartment building. So how is everybody else getting that information? You know, those are the little things that you think you got it covered, and you don't. So this is really, I think, timely, and I'm all in favor of this.
Thank you, Councillor Vanderheiden. Any other comments or questions? Okay, oh, Councillor DeVet?
Thank you for the report. I agree with Councillor Vanderheiden. I think the timing of this is very good and something that we can build on going into the future. I did have a question, I don't think it's actually part of the RFP piece, but it may be. Is there any advice here in terms of what a staffing plan might look like, or how that kind of work would be distributed amongst departments and handled to make sure it's coordinated and properly written, and all those other pieces that come along with communication?
Yes, through you, Warden, to Councillor DeVet. There's going to be, part of the review is going to be an inventory of all of our current communications roles, and kind of finding efficiencies there, if there are some, and setting out clearly defined roles for everyone on staff, and doing a whole overview of everything.
Thank you very much for that, and that's very clear.
Any other comments? I think Councillor Vanderheiden was correct in saying it's timely. The RFP was going out as Chris and Marcy and I were working on communications for our state of emergency, when we called the state of emergency, so we all agreed that this was a very timely project. So with that in mind, you've got a recommendation in front of you, and I would ask for a mover and a seconder for that, please. Councillor Mayhew and Councillor DeVet. All opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we're going to go back to MLPS, and I'm happy to welcome Colin Heisey here, Commander of Professional Practice, and he is going to present the report on a request for proposals for design, build-to-suit lease for the downtown London station. So Colin, over to you, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and good afternoon, council. So this report before you today is in regards to our current station located at 340 Waterloo Street, London, Ontario. The existing station, the existing station is, the lease is set to expire on April 30 of 2022. Additionally, the facility does not meet our operational requirements for the service in the long term. On August the 17th of this year, we issued a request for proposal for a design-built-to-suit lease for an ambulance station located in the downtown area. We had one proponent respond to the RFP and submit a bid to provide a design-built-to-suit lease for an ambulance station. The proposed location is 180 to 182 Simcoe Street in London, Ontario. The proposed station would be approximately 10,000 square feet. It would have a two-story configuration consisting of five double-long bays, crew area, a storage facility, or storage space, rather, and some flex office space. The RFP stipulated that the proponent include a fixed lease price model with Middlesex County as the leaseholder and Middlesex Paramedic Service as the tenant. The duration of the lease, as set out in the RFP, is for a 20-year term with two additional five-year renewal term options at the discretion of county council following that 20-term period. The proponent, which was York Developments, submitted a proposed fixed lease rate of $26,541 per month for a 20-year term with a 5% increase in each of the two optional five-year terms after the 20-year term. So after reviewing the qualification criteria, the pricing model, the proposed response document submitted by the proponent, Middlesex London Paramedic Service is respectfully recommending that the RFP award be made to York Developments. The report aligns with our strategic focus, with the county's strategic focus of promoting service excellence, as Middlesex London Paramedic Service continues to review the current and future needs of the service to ensure proper resourcing for the residents of Middlesex County and the city of London. So the recommendation before council is to authorize the chief administrative officer and the chief of Middlesex London Paramedic Service to work with and execute a contract with York Developments Incorporated, and I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Okay, thank you for that, Colin. Any questions or comments from council? Councillor Ropp and then Councillor Vanderheiden?
Thank you, through the warden to Colin. Colin, I'm just wondering, you said there's five bays in this garage, how many crews are working out of there?
Through the warden, currently, there are four, sorry, five crews working out of the downtown station, which is 340 Waterloo Street. This new proposed facility would have five double-long, so it's looking to have future growth as well, since it's a 20-year lease, so it would have capacity to store up to 10 vehicles at a time. So there's room for growth in this new proposed building site.
Okay, thank you.
And then Councillor Vanderheiden?
Thank you, through the warden. This is sort of an odd question. It's a 20-year lease that the county's going to be holding, and I don't understand, there's probably no need to worry about this, because I imagine we'll still be running this, but what if we are not running the ambulance service in, you know, 10 years or 15 years? We are now into a 20-year lease. Is there an out for that, if the province changes how we do business?
Through the warden, I would have to defer to, maybe Wayne would be able to pick that up. The way that the RFP is worded is that Middlesex County would be the leaseholder, and Middlesex London would act as the tenant. So in terms of, if there was a, it's a good question, but I don't have the answer right now, councillor. Unless if Wayne wants to discuss it, I can certainly get back to council.
I'm happy to, Colin, and thanks for the question, Councillor Vanderheiden, and through you, Madam Warden, to the councillor. If that's a concern, that can certainly be put into the lease. I don't think that's something that York is likely to object to, and we can certainly cover that off.
Any follow-up, Councillor Vanderheiden? Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? I see Bill's hand up.
Just to follow up on Joanne's question, often, I think that's often more a political question than a legal one, about what might happen in those scenarios. In those scenarios in the past, we have a number of situations like that, not just this lease. In fact, we can give you a list of all the leases that are like that. And in the past, when there's been a transfer, we have it from the other way, because we were accepting of land ambulance services whenever the province was running the system. There's usually a provision in there about continuation of services that happens in any transfer agreement that covers off these types of things. But this isn't the only lease we have, where we would have a situation where we own a property. There's quite a few, including our headquarters and a lot of stations that are in this category. So I don't want you to think this is an anomaly. If that political event happened, because that's really what it would be, where there'd be a change, there'd have to be, across the province, some major provisions put in place. This is also something that was discussed when health unit restructuring was being done, not for us, but in many other municipalities, there's shared facilities with municipalities, and restructuring costs of that, and carrying on leases was all part of the discussion. So those are the best examples I can give you. I get that it's a risk, as you described. It's a calculated risk, though, politically, because you have to look at that past history that it will be dealt with in any transfer. I'm not sure that York would agree, and if I was them, I wouldn't agree, to say, oh, you can just have an out clause if the ownership changes, because they've got to recoup their cost of construction over that 20-year period, too. So that might be a tough negotiation, but normally, there's a continuation clause in any transfer for services that go back and forth between the province and the municipality.
Any other comments? Okay, then I need a mover and a seconder for the recommended motion in front of you, please. Councillor Warwick and Councillor Brennan? All opposed? And that's carried. Our next report comes from Cindy and Joe Windsor, the manager of Social Services, and it has to do with electronic document management. So Cindy and Joe?
So thanks, and through the warden, Joe Windsor is actually going to present the report today to council, as he's the lead on the project.
Great, thanks, Cindy, and through the warden, the council. Electronic Document Management, or EDM, was developed as part of the ministry's social systems reform mandate. EDM is one of many updates to the electronic data management. For example, we already implemented My Benefits, which allows clients to submit information through an app, two-way messaging, which allows clients to message their caseworker, and the soon-to-be implemented centralized intake. All ODSP offices and many of Ontario Works sites have already started this process and use Nimble as their vendor record. EDM is part of the overarching social systems transformation, including life stabilization, the employment services transformation, and the centralized intake. The benefits of EDM will be to reduce the amount of time spent on document management functions, will create opportunities for enhanced service delivery, and will free up time for active case management functions for caseworkers. Middlesex will be moving to centralized intake at the end of January 2022. By being fully EDM-ready, it will provide an easy path for clients to submit information for Ontario Works eligible to the province. With the current funding structure, the EDM system would be eligible as an Ontario Works administrative cost, 50% of which would be cost shared with the province. The total initial startup cost will be approximately $33,000. This includes a digitization of ongoing files and the setup of two onsite scanners for ongoing support. The ongoing annual cost will be around $16,000. Social services staff have already been busy removing documents that are no longer required to be kept in files. The master service agreement will need to be signed and put into effect at the end of November 2021. I'm recommending that council approve this report, and that the warden and county clerk be authorized to enter into a service agreement with Nimble Information Strategies Incorporated. Thanks, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you for that, Joe. Any comments, questions? Okay, seeing no hands raised, then you've heard the recommended motion, and if I could ask for a mover and a seconder, please. Councillor Cornelsson and Councillor Vanderheiden? All opposed? And that's carried. Councillor Comments and Other Business? Okay, then we'll move into bylaws, and I will ask Marcy to read those, please.
We have bylaw number 7138, a bylaw to authorize the execution of a professional consulting services agreement with Boulevard Strategy Group, and we have bylaw number 7139 to confirm the proceedings of the November 9, 2021, meeting of county council.
Okay, can I get a mover and a seconder for the first and second reading, please? Councillor Elliott and Councillor Richards? All opposed? That's carried, and for the third and final reading, please. Councillor Brennan and Councillor Warwick? All opposed? And that's carried. Moving into the county committee of the whole, we have no delegations, but we do have some action items. The first one is from Dirk, and it is exemption for a proposed plan of condominium in Middlesex Centre, care of design for happiness, file number 39T-MC-CDM2102.
Thank you, and through the warden. This is a property that is right behind the wellness center, and I think you're familiar with it in Camoka. You dealt with this previously for an official plan amendment, and also Design for Happiness presented as a general information report to council. I was surprised when I double-checked the dates, I can't believe it was already back to 2019, that those two items were dealt with. It is a little atypical in that this is a property that's owned by the municipality, is in the process of being transferred and developed, transferred to and developed by Design for Happiness, and there's some sort of legal steps that are in place for that to occur. They are developing what would be a 69-unit townhouse development, and they have requested an exemption from the full condominium process. And as I've said to you before, the legislation does allow for that, where agreements are already in place, where there's already been a public planning process and a site plan, etc., and all those things have occurred in this case. Middlesex Centre Council did support the exemption in their October 27 meeting, and as outlined in my report, I do believe that it is supported by the planning policies, and I am recommending exemption.
Okay, thank you for that, Dirk, and any questions or comments on this report, please? Okay, then I would ask for a mover and a seconder, please. Councillor Vanderheiden and Councillor Mayhew? All opposed? And that's carried. Sticking with Dirk, there, we've got now a Strathroy Care Doc Official Plan Amendment number 13, Strathroy Scoped Settlement Boundary Review, file number 39-SC-OPA13. Dirk?
Okay, thank you, through the warden. Another application initiated by the municipality, and not a typical application, but one that I do believe meets all the planning tests, and I am recommending approval of it. I think you're aware that the Strathroy Care Doc are undertaking a growing-together exercise, which includes, you know, a fire master plan, a transportation plan, a number of different...
I think you're aware that the Strathroy Care Doc are undertaking a growing together exercise, which includes, you know, a fire master plan, a transportation plan, a number of different studies. And there's an official plan amendment that is underway and that will sort of pull all of those into the land use planning documents. But in the interim, they're looking at designating through this amendment, three areas for residential development in Strathroy. Area one is right across from the Walmart and is an area that was already in the settlement area, but that did not have a designation. It was sort of in a holding designation. Through their review, they had, did conclude that it is best designated residential. Area two, and these are shown on the map, is a small area that was brought in from Adelaide Metcalf to Strathroy Care Doc along Darcy Drive. And as such, it still has the existing Adelaide Metcalf official plan designation. So this would bring it into the Strathroy Care Doc official plan. And then area three, which you're very familiar with, west of Strathmere Lodge and where this, the Seasons Retirement Community and some other additional lands are. It was brought into Strathroy Care Doc, of course, quite a number of years ago, was actually zoned, high density residential and the Seasons community has been developed. But it was never incorporated into the official plan, and so this amendment would deal with that. So all three of those areas would be brought in for residential growth on full municipal services. And I am recommending approval of the amendment as adopted. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you Dirk. Questions or comments on this report? Okay, then with the motion in front of you, I'd ask for a mover in a second, please. Councillor Brennan and councillor DeVet. All opposed. And that is carried. Okay, inaugural meeting program, and this is a report from Marcy. So once again, we have to amend a few our traditional, our traditional events, but okay, over to you, Marcy.
Thank you. So this report is to confirm the program for the inaugural on December 2nd, 2021. The program itself is similar to pre-COVID inaugurals in that we will have a reception in the Middlesex room beginning at 3:00 PM at a dinner following the meeting. There are a couple of notable differences from previous years, one being that the meeting will be held in the hybrid format that we've been using over the past few months. And another being that the Medway Choir will be performing virtually, which I think they did last year. I did want to note that I did have a last minute update to this report to schedule A. I, the, the rules of procedure were amended last fall to amend the rules for the election. So I just had to update those, then that. The recommendation would be that council approve the inaugural program as set out in this report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, thank you, Marcy. Councillor Vanderheiden.
Thank you, and since it's a hybrid and I, I'm reading the election piece and that, that's, that's the piece that I'm worried about because I'm not going to be here. But I can do it by Zoom. Can I, can I vote by Zoom? Like, how, how does that work?
I believe you will be able to participate electronically and we'll have all that sorted out prior to the day.
I thought you would, but I wanted to make sure.
Any other questions or comments? Councillor Mayhew.
Yeah, thank you, madam warden. Marcy, are spouses included in all these activities or are they not?
Yes, I will be sending out some more details and invitations later this week, but spouses are on that list.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, madam warden.
But it, it will be a smaller guest list. Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then you've got the motion with the outline of the program for the inaugural meeting. If I can get a mover in a second or for that, please. Councillor Richards and councillor Mayhew. All opposed. And that's carried. Hey, we've got a report on municipal modernization, the municipal modernization program, and this is an intake three update. And for this, Chris is going to deliver the report.
Thank you, through you, warden, to council. The Ontario government reaffirmed its commitment to work in partnership with municipalities to strengthen our communities and support vital public services during the AMO conference this year. During this year's AMO conference, Municipal Affairs and Housing Minister Steve Clark announced a third intake of the municipal modernization program. Municipalities can benefit from this provincial funding for digital modernization and other projects that will help deliver services more efficiently. Intake three of the program follows the same format as the previous two intakes and it's split between implementation and third party review streams. As part of intake three, Middlesex County submitted applications for four projects. Two projects for implementation stream and two projects for the review stream. The county ITS department submitted a review stream application for an information technology services master plan. And the intent of this proposed project is to provide a comprehensive assessment of current IT services within Middlesex County. Supported local municipalities, Strathmere Lodge, Middlesex County Library and Middlesex London Paramedic Services. The master plan will provide actionable recommendations to ensure efficient, effective and sustainable service delivery. And the master plan will also help make staff make informed decisions, ensure consistency in decision-making process. Provide a long-term step-by-step guide for future improvements. The next one that was also review stream was Middlesex County Community Services Economic Development and Planning Departments. Submitted a third-party review stream application regarding Middlesex County attainable housing review. In 2019, the county heard directly from residents that the lack of affordable housing and lack of rental housing were the top two most pressing housing issues in Middlesex County. The recently updated Middlesex County Economic Development Strategy Update 2021 to 2025. Which involved extensive communications and business engagement identified that the lack of diverse and affordable housing is impacting the ability to attract and retain talent. Project deliverables for this would include a report appendix of wording that in plain language summarizes the housing issues and options for the public slash citizens. So that the county and local municipalities could include this information on their websites. It's also been identified through public consultation that it is often very unclear where the public can access this information and the services related to housing. The proposed third-party review project would examine the housing continuum. Which includes emergency shelter, short-term supportive housing, long-term supportive housing. Subsidized rental housing, rental housing and ownership housing and identify gaps in the provision of housing and corresponding municipal strategies for attainable housing. And it would further examine the factors that influence housing shifts and identify the factors that can be locally influenced. Now moving into the implementation stream, Middlesex County, Middlesex Centre and TEM Centre submitted a joint implementation stream application regarding the modernization of how budget reports are generated and presented to municipal staff, councillors and members of the public. The intent of this proposed project is to improve the presentation format of budget reports while decreasing the time spent generating these reports. This is to be accomplished by procuring and configuring purpose-driven budget reporting software that will leverage existing technology that is used at each of these sites. The last submission was through Middlesex County Library and it was implementation stream as well for library service modernizations. Changing demographics are placing increased pressure on our rural communities, including the ability to provide essential services through the public library. In Middlesex County, the library's comprehensive community library strategy has effectively addressed these pressures and needs in our larger communities. However, enhancing and extending services at some of the smaller branch libraries is an ongoing challenge. Where restricted open hours are not always convenient for the community and valuable resources, collections, computers, available space are unused most hours of the day. The administration of the Middlesex County Library proposing the implementation of a library technology service that incorporates the use of technology to support greater community access to library resources and services. While complementing the current staffing hours. The proposed project is the installation of site monitoring and resource self-checkout systems that integrate with the library's existing software and database. And through the implementation of the system, Middlesex County Library will expand open hours and services to rural residents while leveraging existing resources. And combining them with state-of-the-art technology to modernize the library's service delivery model. In terms of alignment with strategic focus, this was a big one, I think we had almost every section here. So cultivating community vitality, connecting through infrastructure, strengthening our economy and promoting service excellence. And the recommendation today is just that Middlesex County accept this report as information relating to intake three of the municipal modernization program. I am happy to answer any questions anyone might have. If we get into specifics, I might lean on some of my colleagues here to, to help me out when it pertains to some projects in, in their areas, so thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for that, Chris. So any, after all that, any comments or questions on? This. Okay, seeing then, then you've got the recommendation in front of you, so I would ask for a mover in a second, please. I'm councillor Cornelissen and councillor Warwick. All opposed. And that's carried. Onto correspondence and information items. General administration payables for October 4th to 29th, 2021 totaling $123,743.83. Planning payables for October 4th to 29th, 2021 totaling $33,847.75. Social service payables, October 4th to the 29th, 2021 totaling $1,834,639.56. Strathmere Lodge payables, October 4th to 29th totaling, totaling $229,373,029 cents. Road payables for October 4th to 29th, the 29th, 2021 totaling $1,541,508.81. MLPs payables for October 4th to 2029, for 2021 totaling $1,185,325.21. Economic development payables from October 4th to the 29th, 2021 totaling $19,440.58. Information technology payables, October 4th to the 29th, 2021 totaling $114,824.72. And electronic, electronic payments for October 2021 totaling $2297,37.90. Can I get a mover in a second or to receive those for information, please? Councillor Ropp and councillor Smith. All opposed. And that's carried. Ministry of Long-Term Care Compliance Inspection Report. AMO policy update for October 28th, 2021, and I do believe that Brent wants to speak to this.
Yes, thanks, warden, for you to cancel. Just to highlight to council that the Long Term Care Homes Act of 2007, which is the legislation that currently governs the lodge and 620 other plus long-term care homes in the province is about to be replaced by the Fixing Long-Term Care Act. It doesn't appear that the new act will be substantially different than the current act, but just to highlight that the new act will enshrine the province's recent commitment to an average of four hours of direct care per resident per day. So that's further to a recent provincial announcement that in fact, over the next three and a half years, there will be substantial investment in long-term care for direct care. Which is really a substantial increase. Much anticipated for those of us who work in long-term care. Other new act changes, there are going to be some changes to the inspection program. Item number 15 on the council's agenda, information items agenda, the AMO policy update speaks to the fact that the province is doubling the number of inspectors. And the focus here will be to go back to a focus on what the province is calling annual pro, proactive inspection. So currently, the inspectors focus on critical incident reports and complaints. And now what the province is saying is they want to essentially go back to annual inspections. The new act is expected to be passed, as I understand it, by the end of the year. Happy to entertain any questions on that.
Okay, thanks Brent. Questions for that, please? Councillor Ropp.
Thank you, through the warden to Brent. What kind of staff uptake do you, do you anticipate to get to that level of four hours of personal care? I mean, that seems to me like it's very substantial and the funding will be, have to increase a lot to get to that, I would think.
Through you, warden, councillor Ropp, over the next three and a half years. My calculation is that our nursing wages budget will double. And that we will, we're currently at about 2.75 hours, I think. And so we will be at that four hour based on what we can anticipate future funding.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we'll move on. Next up is a letter from the Solicitor General of Ontario regarding Middlesex Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan for 2021 to 2026. County of Middlesex OP Alignment Exercise. County of Middlesex Official Plan Review. AMO Policy Update, October 26th, 2021. AMO Policy Update, October 21st, 2021. OEB Notice to Customers of Enbridge Gas Incorporated Regarding 2022 Rate Increase. TBDSB Rural Education Task Force Middlesex Community Consultation Dates. Councillor Cornelissen, did you want, did you have any input on this? You are muted. You're muted.
Better?
Yeah.
So this task force has been meeting for quite some time. Naturally, we had an extended break when the pandemic first came into effect. But it's coming to a conclusion probably hopefully in February. What, as you'll notice on the information that you have before you, these are the dates and times, locations that the community consultations will be taking place in Middlesex County. Additionally, there are three other community consultations in Elgin and one in Oxford County. The, the themes came to curtailation through a strategy sessions that we held. And while there are a number of different areas of focus, these seem to be the four key areas that came to, that came to head that we felt we need to be addressed. And so as these will be presented at the community consultations. And as you can see, there will be a requirement to register and COVID protocols will be followed. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you for that. Any questions or comments on that? Certainly has been well organized or well advertised, so I hope that there is participation. Okay, can I get a mover in a second or to receive those items for information, please? Councillor Warwick and councillor Brennan. All opposed. And that's carried. Any inquiries? Okay, so we do have to resume our closed session. So I would ask for a mover and a second or to re-enter back into our closed session, please. Councillor Richards and councillor DeVet, and that is at 1:50 PM. Okay, so.
Okay, so we're resuming our open session here in the Middlesex County Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 9. We've just risen from closed session where we were just given information on land ambulance personnel matters. In front of us, we've got our list of our next meetings. The Warden's banquet, Saturday, November 27. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn at 12 minutes after 3:00. Counselor Vanderhaiden, Counselor Elliott, all in favor, and that is carried. Thank you very much.